Good morning. It's 9:00 AM and I'd like to call to order the December 20th, 2022, City Council meeting. Please call the roll.
Garza?
Here.
Bass?
Here.
Badwell?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Pyros, Dick, Carmola?
Here.
Plunge of Allegiance. Plunge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning's prayer will be given by Daryl Peterson. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Merry Christmas. Dear heavenly and most gracious Father, we come to you again. We just thank you, Father God, for this season. This is the season, Father God, that should open our eyes and get our hearts right, helps Lord God to realize the power that you have. And Father, we just thank you for the birth of Jesus. We thank you, Lord God, for the wisdom, the wisdom that Mary had, the agreement that she said, "Let it be to me according to your word." And Father, we just thank you as we have city council, as we have meetings, they have plans and purposes. Father, they just listen to the spirit of God, Father, for directions to know what to do and what not to do, what is the best and what is the not. And I just pray, Father, for today, and thank you, Father God, for next year that's going to be a better and greater year, in Jesus' name, and they all said amen.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 4A, video presentation on the 150th celebration.
Good morning, Council Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge this is our last meeting in the sesquicentennial year, so I'm going to say sesquicentennial a few more times because we're going to squeeze them in before the year's up. But earlier this year, we made a video kind of celebrating the work that is done by employees and volunteers such as yourselves. A lot of people don't realize, but council is actually a volunteer position. They don't get paid. So just the role that you guys play and that employees play in the building of our community and the sustaining of this community that was put together 150 years ago. So I wanted to share that video in case people missed it on social or any of the other places and, you know, just celebrate the closing out of our sesquicentennial year. So IT. There's your cue. I was told to kill about three seconds.
150 years ago, our community made a choice to be more engaged in our own governance, to pursue a shared vision for our community and to serve the public good by establishing a government that would cultivate those things through local rule and public service. Today, city employees and volunteers continue that work. From public works to public safety, from parts and facilities to utility billing, we work to make our city safer, more connected, more just, healthier, more beautiful, happier. It's not glamorous. It's not always fun. It's hard work, but it's meaningful work. We strive to support the quality of life, belonging, safety, and opportunity of all our residents through careful stewardship, integrity, and collaboration. As our community celebrates this milestone, we continue to work toward a shared vision and to ensure that the city of Hutchinson has even more to celebrate in the future.
Well, thank you so much, Rebecca. I've watched that several times and it's just so fun to reflect on how we've celebrated this year and thanks for all your work in highlighting the celebration. All right, next item, please.
Item 4B, update on 30th and Lucille traffic signal.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jeff Shank, engineering. And before I dive into this one, I had an update that popped up after the agenda went out, and it's even less fun than this one. So 11th Avenue. They are, the ground is freezing this week. It's going to be freezing pretty deep. So they are not going to be able to pour back the street like they intended to this week. It's going to push them off till probably the end of next week is what their intention is right now. They have, they've made temporary entrances for everybody inside of the closed section so they can get into their houses and their driveways and have access to the street for Christmas. But then after Christmas, they'll be moving them back out and then start blanketing the ground to try and get it thawed out. So basically, the big one is, is that you're probably going to see them working on the other side of Monroe Street on 11th. And so it's not that they forgot about the section that's open. They just have to wait for that ground to thaw out.
Great. And Jeff, has there been communication to those residents about that delay?
Yes. They've sent out, they put out door hangers yesterday.
Okay. Great. Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Is there any update on when they think an ETA would be on that section of 11th on being done?
It was supposed to be the street, the original schedule they had had it being reopened this week to get back access. So their plan right now is if everything works out and the weather forecast holds and the ground thaws at the speed they hope, that they'll pour next Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So then the following week, that section would be reopened to the residents, to local traffic.
And Jeff, since we're talking about these things, give us an update on Farmington Park. It looks like there's activity over there.
There is. I don't, I didn't check on that one exactly right now. They've installed one of the boxes on one of the pipes that have failed. Right now, we're working at getting the street fitted back in. There was a little bit of a high spot that we didn't anticipate. So they're just working through that right now, but Ward Davis is working on it and he's just getting through it. So hopefully, he was going to try and do two boxes at the same time. Instead, he's going to do one and then the other so that way you didn't have both streets closed at the same time.
Well, thanks.
And then 30th and Lucille. So this is kind of an update on the study, the speed study that we did that kind of came out of our last meeting. We had talked about the potential of flashing signs and different things to try and help moderate the speed of the traffic in that area. The super, super interesting little piece of paper I put in front of you, which is a speed study, has the breakdown of speeds by hour. And then the biggest one is the 85th percentile is the one highlighted in pink. The top left one is the study that was done in September. The second one down is the one that was done in October that was put up while this flashing sign was up, letting people know what the speed was they were traveling. And then the third one was done in December, a couple of weeks after the sign was removed because we wanted to see what effect that actually had with the people trying to see if it was, had any positive results. And as you can see, the average, the 85th percentile speed in September was 51.2, which is 6.2 miles an hour over the posted speed limit. And then in October, they brought it down to 49.2, which is just 4.2 over. And then after we took it out, it actually went back up. I didn't, that was kind of, you know, the knowledge thing was seeing, does the sign make a difference? Do people be educated and then now be like, hey, okay, now I realize this is the 45? Or is it just a flashing sign that kind of brought awareness? And looking at it, you see the 85th, the 95th percentile, it also had a pretty big effect on. The only one that was a little bit surprising was the mean. The top one, the 45.9, and then it dropped to 45.3, and then it went down to the 44.6, which actually shows that the speeds are coming closer together. There's less variance, which is good. So anyways, after looking at it, you see that the flashing sign did make a big difference in helping. And so if you guys want, I guess, we think maybe posting one of those signs or getting one of those flashing signs that shows the speed limit that goes on the speed limit sign, one of the solar powered ones might be prudent at this location. Being that it's not an actual school zone, it is higher, you know, 45 miles an hour. It's a higher speed. It's adjacent to a school. I mean, it's just, it's a very unique location and circumstance. So yes, if you have any questions.
So I guess I'm just curious what your recommendation is then based on?
Well, we looked at it and looking at the results and the benefit that the speed sign put up there, I would feel comfortable recommending that we purchase one of the systems, if not two, and get at least on that east side where they're coming in hot and trying to get them down into speeds to help regulate speeds and get everything spaced out, you know? And it's easier for people to turn in and out of when all the cars are driving the same speed. And so when it, when the results show it and then being as how they're starting to come back, you know, to that higher speed after we took it down, I think that it would be a positive thing to install one.
So in lieu of any sort of temporary or permanent light, just get permanent speed notification?
Right. And that's because that's kind of what Jim Tabobin had talked about when he was here with JEO was that, you know, it didn't warrant it. We did do another traffic count just to verify that, you know, it wasn't, there wasn't another big, that the traffic didn't climb to rates that would, that would maybe then look at doing another warrant analysis. And they followed along with all the other traffic counts that we had done prior to that didn't warrant it. And so Jim had kind of alluded to the fact that the more consistent we can make the speed, the easier it is for people to turn in and out because it's hard when you, you know, you're waiting on this car that's driving really slow and then you're like, okay, well, I got a big gap here, but the next one's going 50. And so looking at it, looking at the results were, believe that it is bringing those speeds closer together to help get, make it easier for people to navigate that.
What are council's thoughts? I think staff's looking for some direction here.
Well, go ahead.
Well, I have always thought that if what we knew was consistent, and it sounds like we've learned three different times that what, you know, there's not a traffic light warranted there. I've always thought one of the speed limit signs with the flashing thing on the bottom would be a prudent way to spend money and get speeds more consistent and slowed down, especially westbound. Am I correct? I mean, that's, those are my thoughts. I think, I think it does prove here that being aware of your speed helps.
I don't agree. I think you need to put the lights back up. You have them turning there. They're coming with a turn. Your lights are slow. Now, what's the regular speed there? What's the speed limit there?
The posted speed is 45 miles an hour.
45 mile an hour, okay. Well, you can look at here, they're going quite pretty fast. I'd hate to see a car turn in 51 miles an hour or 50 mile an hour. My opinion, you need to put the lights back up. You have projected left turn for those people. Buses are longer. So that's my opinion and that's what I look at it. So and I think you should get comments from the audience. This is a survey. See what they have to say.
John and Sarah, do you have strong feelings one way or the other about the light?
I'm not ready to discount the light yet on whether it's needed or not needed. I think the flashing light, speed limit, beware situation is warranted. I felt that it was warranted in the first place. It's just proves that. But I'm not ready to say whether I'm ready to put a light up or not. I need to think about this. Because I do think that the information provided by the consultant is valid. We also have some extenuating circumstances rather than just normal traffic counts in this particular situation.
So would you be in favor of authorizing the signage and then reevaluating on the light or?
I'm definitely in favor of the signage. I'm still thinking on the light.
Okay.
I think you put the signage up and put the traffic lights, have them slow down. There comes a traffic light. The only time a traffic light is going to come in is when they get a B-phase movement, it turns the lights on. Otherwise, it's going to stay green all the time. So that will get good protection. And if there's no cars going down there, it should stay green. So of course, I was a traffic signal tech and that's my opinion.
Sarah, do you have strong thoughts?
Well, I guess my little thoughts are, we can't have, like, the temporary light was feasible as far as funds go, but I know there's quite a bit into making it permanent. But I'd like to know more about a light that only does traffic while the school needs it and then stays green the rest of the time. What's the technology on that that Steve was talking about?
We have them around town. I think there's one, there's several of them. 10th and Adams is one that I know of. I think 13th and Main, all of those are only actuated when somebody pulls up off of the side. Like Main Street, 13th and Main is always green unless somebody is coming from Ace Hardware. They pull up to the light, they actuate it, and it sends a call to the signal and then it, yeah, turns green and allows them to go through.
Did the consultant offer what traffic counts warrant a light at this intersection?
I'd have to go back through.
I think they did. And my question would be during those hours of the day that it's high traffic, would that average out to a warrantable?
Like, did we look at the traffic numbers for a light that actuates versus one that's always off?
I think the consultant mentioned that that would increase the safety risk. Am I remembering that incorrectly?
The consultant studies said that there was, it needed to have, it didn't, it failed to meet all three warrants, which was peak hour is one of them, which is basically, you know, at its busiest times, it wasn't busy enough to warrant a signal. It met, I think, two of the three on that one. And the one of them was, was so far out that they didn't feel that they could even get to the point where it would come in. Their concern is, and there's, there are studies for it, but is that if you put a signal up when it's not warranted, it actually decreases safety because it's the feeling of safety, the false sense of security that signals tend to bring. And so since it wasn't warranted, they felt that it could actually probably lead to more accidents if it was left in or installed.
Are there different warrants though for a different type of light is what I'm wondering? Like one that's not used all the time, like the one where it stays green most of the time?
No, that would have been the baseline. Because then, because then your study was just if you even erect one. Then if you do, then you would go into counts, peak times, and a bunch of different factors to determine like time lengths and if you would leave it in self-actuated on the sides or if it would be, you know, a time light or what your system would be. It was, it may, one thing that they did look at that it could get probably, if it was a little bit closer, I think that they said it may move to a warrant on a four-way stop. But that's a whole other can of worms there, so.
Can you get us a rough budget number for the next meeting or the meeting after on what a stoplight at that intersection would require?
Yes.
Because I know it's going to require changing the intersection quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah, it won't be by next meeting because I'll have to, because we'll have to do, I'll have to have another study done because we have queue length problems and then we'll have to figure out. Lucille is going to require quite a bit of work, I believe, because there isn't enough technically right now. What, when we put up the temporary signal, they had some concerns because there isn't enough stacking for the left turn lane. Your queue length, there's a minimum requirement and that's very short there when you're eastbound. That it's, I think, I don't remember what the length is.
Can we, can we get an idea without doing a study?
Yeah, can you get a ballpark?
I need to, well, I'm not going to do, I wouldn't do a full study. I just need to know proper queue lengths and stuff like that. It's going to take me a little bit of time to gather that data. I'm just a little busy. But I can say maybe by the second meeting in January, I should be able to, because I'll need to figure out, like, because there's an RCB that we're going to have to lengthen and all kinds of stuff. So it's more than fair.
I guess I'm curious, has, has traffic patterns changed any since the light went away in a good way? It's gotten worse?
And the weather, we have to take into account. The snow yesterday. And it was an evening's weather. It's, there's several drivers here today and.
Do you want to come up to the podium and state your name? And please limit your comments to five minutes or less, please.
I'm Diane Cannon, bus driver for Bueller. I'm going to ask one last time for your reconsideration of this light. The problem is not getting better and with the weather, it will get a whole lot worse. And this problem will not go away. It's not. And if we continue to lose drivers at the rate we are losing them, it's going to be bad. Those that, as you can see, we have a few more people here with us today to show their support. Those that are not here have asked us to once again be their voice. After a few phone calls and texts last night, we asked them if they weren't able to attend today to please reach out to you, our city council members, so you may be receiving some emails. We are the voice of 2,000 signatures of concerned parents, neighbors, and citizens that signed the petition that was presented to you at a previous meeting. I will tell you, with the small amount of snow that we had yesterday, it was proof that things do get a little crazy. This week, we have a driver gone for Christmas break. Total chaos with that many more parents arriving to pick up their students. That with one driver gone. With one driver gone, you have all those parents coming to the school to take and pick up. And with weather, the snow yesterday morning early was really pretty heavy. It slowed things down tremendously. I have a mom here that she texted me wondering where I was because I was late because of the snow. We can't get out of there. It slows things down tremendously and it wasn't slick. He said that that isn't a school zone, that street, but there is a school there. That's, I mean, it's there. We can't ignore the fact that there's a lot of traffic. There's kids and there's buses and we move slow. We can't pull out the way some of the cars do. We depend on them to use their blinker, which is dangerous. They're coming at 50 miles per hour down 30th and we're supposed to pull out in front of that. I think it's a very risky situation and to be quite honest, I honestly don't know why it has taken this long to make that decision. It's, it's a school and it's kids and it's a bus.
I think the reason it's taken so long is because experts in the field have told us it is less safe with the light and we want to make sure kids are safe. And so I know that there's a perception that it's safer with the light and we want to honor your, your experience in that because you drive it every day, but we're getting conflicting recommendations and so.
I would agree. And that's where I'm at. And to hear you speak that it's getting worse, definitely, I hear that and I'm surprised by that. I wonder if the job market, when it improves for bus drivers, and we have more bus drivers because I know you're doubling up on your routes, some of you, if that will help this issue too?
If we could get them, that would be great.
Yes.
But, and we have gotten a few this year, but that, I mean, we have all the drivers we need at Prairie Hills. There's 15 big buses at Prairie Hills, Prairie Hills drivers. Then we have out-of-district drivers that are there also. So you have 15, 18 buses that are trying to get in and out of that area with all the parents, with all the staff and teachers at the same time. And when there is a driver gone, it's just awful and it's very chaotic. I took a picture on my phone yesterday. I can show you. The traffic line is backed up a long way for people trying to get out of there. And that's just with one driver gone. We've had three drivers gone in one day. That's 150 more.
Diane, I don't want to make the situation worse. That's the only place I'm coming from. I don't want to make it worse for anybody. And, and that's the, just like Jade said, that's where I, my mind goes back to, you know, the increased liability for a bad accident. If people become dependent on us. If, if people become dependent on a stoplight that's not warranted. But I.
I say that there needs to be a straight light.
Well, Mr. Gardner says there needs to be one too.
I feel like.
We drive it every day and you can ask any of the other drivers if it's their opinion. Show of hands if a light is warranted.
I, I feel like if, if we're seeing trends for community growth in that area along that corridor and if, if the school is increasing its student population, it would trend to the point where even the traffic count would justify it at some point in the near future. So I think that if we want to be proactive, we could make the case to put a light in in regards to traffic count. I feel that way.
Well, I do think growth is trending in that direction, from what little bit I know of.
But, but I do want to get an idea of what the solution would be at that intersection.
It's only going to get worse. It's, it's not gonna, there's nothing going to change the way it is. It's only gonna, there's never going to be an improvement with nothing done. And even if it's a flashing light, that's something. But for the buses, there is a school there.
I don't know how everyone else feels, but I think we should go ahead and get the, um, the temporary, the, the, the flashing sign that warns people on the speed zone now and then get our possible solution for a traffic light put in front of us. And then weigh on the decision at that point.
Yeah. I'm fine with that. I just want to move forward on the speed signs because it's clear that they're, we're working and bringing down the speeds in that corridor. So we have a solution that we can implement relatively quickly. Let's, let's move forward on that while we get additional information.
I agree.
Does that give you enough direction, Jeff?
Now, what's your answer? Would you, I can't hear you down here.
I, I would say go ahead and get the, get the, the speed sign up with the flashing lights to warn people that it is a new speed zone. While Jeff works on what the solution would be for that intersection for a traffic signal and what that potential.
Permanent installation of a traffic signal?
Well, we're going to redo the intersection too.
Well, that's, you can take your polls and move them back. I know all about the clearances. I know all that stuff.
I mean, as far as.
Right, understand.
Turn lanes.
Well, with that said, there were lights up there for three years. Are those just?
Temporary lights.
Those are temporary? Okay.
But we could always consider putting up a temporary light again if we go that direction until we hit the funding year to actually put that in. How would that go? Can you put another temporary light until it can be in a funding year? For new installation? Like, let's say we can't really put one in until 2025.
2025?
For example.
Could we put a temporary one back up?
I'll be retired by then.
I don't know. I'd have to do, I'd have to look at it. I, I, I don't know what goes into the temporary traffic signals. I don't know what we have available. Um, and I know that they had to steal the controller from there to fix a different one. But, so I, I, I just have to look into that as far as what it would take to actually put in a temporary signal and make sure it, uh, does, and it's functioning properly and that it's done correctly. And I will say there was some other stuff.
It's going to be expensive and we might not be able to put that in this year's budget or next year's budget. So there's always the option.
Yeah, we'll have to take something else out.
Yeah.
And that's why it's important that we, um, base decisions on consistent metrics so that we're not leaving some communities at risk in favor of other communities that don't meet those metrics. So it's, it's always preferable to make database decisions.
Well, let me tell you what I think about this situation. I was a traffic tech and we put temporary lights in. As far as the warrants are concerned, yeah, you need the warrants. But I have to be real careful what I say up here because number one, I'm a council member. Number two, I know the laws of traffic lights. And I have to, do I, do I tell you what the laws are? I have to be real careful what I say because I went to school for this. So that being said, they need traffic lights and I have to be real careful what I say because there's a lot of traffic lights in this town, okay? And I'm, and I have to, you need the traffic lights. And it's, you know, you're going to put us in a situation where they're going to have an accident and you're going to have a, it ain't going to be good.
I just know that, um, you know, a few years ago, Avenue A neighborhood petitioned for signals and it was not approved. And so, I mean, obviously that's a different sort of facility now. It doesn't have the same amount of children there. But, um, when we stick to guidelines in one part of town and then we don't stick to guidelines in another part of town, I think it sends a, a wrong message on equity. And, um, again, I, I'm not against a light. I just think we need to be really careful about how we make these decisions in the future. If they're going to be based on petition instead of based on data, that's fine. We just need to apply that opportunity equally.
I understand you completely, Mayor, but I don't even know if I should even say this because I got a lawyer sitting here. So anyway, uh, there's, yeah. We took lights out years ago on the, the, what do you call it? The, the, uh, there's five, there's five.
Washington walnut light?
There's five, uh, I can't, when I get nervous, I can't talk, so I'm nervous, all right?
You don't need to be nervous.
There's warrants on five warrants. I know all the warrants, okay? We took the traffic lights on the warrants out, okay? So with that being said, if we did everything on warrants, you'd be taking a lot of lights in, you'd be putting a lot of lights in.
Okay, that's helpful information. Yeah, and you're going to know that a lot.
If you want to go to all these traffic lights and check the warrants on them, yeah, you gotta be careful on that to me.
Yeah.
All right. So I'm just saying, you want to talk to warrants? We got a lot of traffic lights out here.
Yeah.
So we gotta be careful with that.
I just, again, I'm, I don't feel passionately about not putting the light back in. That's fine if that's what council wants to do. But when other parts of the city come to us with the same request, we, we just need to give it the same level of credibility.
Well, I agree with you, okay? But on this particular light right here, I think you need to have the light and that's my opinion. So. But I'm only one person on this council and you got four others here, so.
I mean, we're, we, we are dealing with an area that is of higher speed.
Mm-hmm, for sure.
Which is a little bit different than the situation that you're referring to.
That the area I was referring to had children walking to school more than this particular area. So there were, there were other considerations. There's a, there's a variety of factors and, you know, that's water under the bridge. Council at that time chose not to fund that light, but, um, I think you have sufficient direction, right, Jeff?
We also have kids trying to cross that street. We do have kids trying to cross that street to go south into the neighborhood across.
Well, I think at this point, council has provided some direction to get those speed signs up as quickly as possible, Jeff, and then, you know, come back to us with the best you got on an estimate because I know that's going to be a significant amount of, of work.
So we will, uh, right now there's, every, all materials are kind of backlogged. And so we can go ahead and put in a requisition and start getting those ordered. And I, I don't know the timeline that they'll come in, but as soon as possible, um, we can get those in and installed. And one thing that wasn't brought up, but if you're going to do a full look at the intersection and at the traffic signals, there is a third option that, with all the upgrades that are going to be required there, there is a third option that is actually, was talked about as probably being the most safe for this location and that's a roundabout. So it, it is very similar to the, what do you see in Avenue A intersection? Is the fact that there's a lot of left turn movements in both directions, which means that the roundabout can fully be functioning at all times with keeping people moving. And it may be a more viable option and long-term and significantly less expensive.
How long would that take to complete?
I don't, it's.
It'll be retired.
Well, that's in both of them.
Well, I'm just saying, there's only really one entrance into the school. Can it be completed in the summer's time?
Yes.
I don't know.
Yes.
Okay.
As long as the art, the concrete box on the north side will be.
Can we get a grant for?
Probably.
Probably could if it was a roundabout.
Just wanted to get out there that that was.
Not to prolong this conversation, but when you come back to us with potential costs, can you, is the county, the township going to help with their portion of Lucille? Um, you know, that's kind of a funny thing Lucille is, from what I understand, on who, who maintains it?
Because it's actually the township north of 36th. The county has part of it and then the city has part of it.
Yeah, so if you could explain possibly who might be all involved in that? And how much, well, I'm asking you to do a lot. I, I guess just the cost would be fine right now.
Yeah, there's, the, the north side is, uh, split and most of the advancements or upgrades that would be required on Lucille will be on the half that is not owned by the city. But we can, right now we'll just work getting a cost and an idea of what we'd be looking at. Um, and then we can have further discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Castle. Jack Neuber, City of Hutchinson, the great city of Hutchinson. Ha, happy birthday, 150. What's the, uh, speed limit on Bueller Haven Road? Those buses that go to Bueller? They have to turn left to go to Bueller. Just wondering, everyone's talking about how fast are they going? They don't have a light there. We're not going to put a light there either, but.
Is that that T intersection you're talking about?
30th?
No, I'm talking.
At Bueller Haven Road.
Yeah, was that that T?
That same, this is, we're talking about Lucille and 30th. They're turning left to go to Bueller. And they're, they've got to turn left. When they come up past stop sign, they got to turn left. And they've got to, they got to, they got to make sure it's clear. And when they turn, they got to make sure they don't get rear-ended by someone probably going 70 miles an hour. Just saying.
I'm not sure that's completely comparable because we're out in the county.
It's, it, but they're, they're, they're talking about this.
It gets tighter as you come in.
They're talking about the speed of people. I, I, I like the blinking. Every, every town has that except for Hutch. You go to Haven, go Sterling. And you, you, lines, you, when you get into town, you got to slow down because you see that little, that little, that little red light that says, and then it turns green as soon as you hit the speed.
I, I think what, what happens is you're coming into a city and you're slowing down and the elasticity of traffic condenses as you're coming in and creates a smaller gaps to try to get through there.
There's also not a left-hand turn going west to Lucille. Those people, a lot of people actually are sitting on those yellow lines, which is actually illegal. But it's, they don't want to get rear-ended.
They're trying to get people space to kind of get.
Right, to get around. So I think doing little things like that versus putting up a light and let's do the speed limit. That's my opinion.
Well, thank you so much for your comments.
I get that intersection every day at work, probably three times a day.
Thank you, Jack. Well, let's move on to oral communications. Um, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? And if so, please, um, approach the podium, state your name and zip code and limit your comments to five minutes. Craig, were you gonna, is Craig gonna talk? Oral communications? No, okay. All right, well, hearing none, next item, please.
Item five, consent agenda.
Is there a motion or comments on the consent agenda?
I would move to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pirostae Cravalo.
Yes, next item, please.
Item six A, consider resolution for fiscal year 2022 waiver of KSA 75 1120A requirements.
Good morning, council. Angela Richard, Director of Finance. I have three routine matters for you this morning. Um, the first one is the GAAP waiver. Um, the state of Kansas statutes and the regu, regulations from the Kansas Board of Accountancy um, state that municipalities must conform with generally accepted accounting principles, also known as GAAP, unless the municipality, um, adheres to KSA 75 dash 1120AC where we adopt a resolution to waive the requirements of GAAP. And then we report on the Kansas regulatory basis of accounting. I've outlined some differences between GAAP and K-MAG, um, which you probably are well aware of. Um, K-MAG is just revenue is what we receive in cash and expenditures are what we encumber or actually spend. The opinion of city staff is that the cost to comply with GAAP exceeds any benefit that we would receive from this. Um, it, and also citizens are usually more able to understand K-MAG versus GAAP. And it's a lower cost of preparation, um, to prepare the financial statements and for the audit. So the city staff recommends adopting the resolution to waive the requirements of KSA 75 dash 1120AA. Are there any questions?
We do this every year.
Yes, we do.
Council have any questions about the need for this? Or is there a motion on this item?
I'll make the motion to approve a resolution declaring the requirements of KSA 75 dash 1120AA are not relevant to the preparation of financial statements and reports and waiving the requirement of conformity with a set act in favor of conformity with the cash basis and budget laws of the state of Kansas and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pirostae Cravalo.
Yes, next item, please.
Item six B, consider resolution appropriating funds to pay payrolls and claims for 2023.
This is also an annual resolution that we passed. Um, the matter is whether we should consider paying vendors weekly and paying payroll bi-weekly um, ahead of time and then including those payments in your council packets for approval. Uh, we have several things in place that help make sure that we're paying vendors properly. Um, we adopt the budget annually and we make sure that we are staying within budget. We have purchasing poli, policies, internal controls and monthly reports to council. Um, and we also provide the detailed list of expenditures and claims that are paid. Um, also we have an annual audit where they audit our internal controls and our financial statements. So if this city staff feels that, um, we have enough controls in place that we can continue paying claims and payroll in advance and then, um, including those in your council packet. So city staff would recommend we approve the resolution as submitted. Are there any questions?
Questions or a motion?
I'll move to approve a resolution providing for the appropriation by fund of the budget of the City of Hutchinson for the year beginning January 1st, 2023 and appropriating money from the various funds to pay payrolls and claims against the City of Hutchinson for the calendar year of 2023 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pirostae Cravalo.
Yes, next item, please.
Item six C, consider resolution establishing refuse rates for 2023.
Okay, this is my final item and it's something we do annually as well. We have a contract with Stittman's Refuse Services for trash removal services. The contract provides for a 2% annual increase. Also included in that cause, um, in that is a clause that if diesel exceeds $4 per gallon, they would be able to raise rates, um, 1% for each 10 cents over $4 a gallon. So currently diesel is running approximately, uh, $5 a gallon or over the last three months is kind of averaged that. But I spoke with Herschel West from Stittman's. But I spoke with Herschel West from Stittman's Refuse or Waste Connections, and he is doing with this with a lot of cities. He's only increasing it 5%, where he could increase it about 10% for the diesel clause. So that would make the increase this year, the 2% plus 5%, so 7%. So in your packet, I included what that would be. The residential service would go from 988 to 1057, and then the commercial from 1065 to 1140. So council recommends approving the resolution as presented. I do want to say if diesel prices do drop, we can then reevaluate that increase during the year.
So we have an opening to negotiate that throughout the year, not just to?
The way it reads, if, if for three months it averages less than that, then we could drop the price.
Great, great. Are there any questions or comments from council?
So when the, when it goes up, then, right now, we're going to, we're voting on increasing it. So if it drops, we can't come back, it can't, it don't drop automatically?
I believe I would come before you again with another resolution to drop.
That makes more sense to me. When it drops, we drop. When it goes up, we go up.
Yes, and I think he could have increased the prices in 22, but he didn't, so.
I'm curious what index or, is it a local gas station in particular? Is there an index that we're looking at for Kansas fuel prices?
I, I didn't ask, the contract doesn't state, so we would have to go look at that. But since he didn't raise it the full percent.
I get that.
I, I didn't look into that further, but we would if, if diesel starts to drop.
I noticed yesterday when I was driving across town, diesel was 401 a gallon. And now my mind goes to, I wonder what that will do to the trash rates if it goes down right below, you know, I mean.
Yeah. If it stays below that for three months, then we'll reevaluate.
Depends on the use of fuel points from shopping at Dylan.
Well, and, and I appreciate his honesty in how he's handling this because in the business I'm in, it, it is all over the place how people are charging for the extra fuel expense. And I, I think this is pretty fair, makes sense to me.
We have seen fuel surcharges added to some of our invoices as well.
And are they random? Some of them I've seen are just totally random.
Most let us know they're going to start charging that, but sometimes.
It, it's not uncommon. I mean, if that's what the question is, I think it's pretty fair.
Yeah, no, I think it's just a compliment to Stittman's that they're tying it to something and it, it can go up and down, so.
Then I'll move to approve a resolution establishing rates and charges and franchise fees for collection and disposal of garbage and trash by the city. All is authorized by section 10-209 and 10-210 of the Hutchinson City Code and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
No problem. Yeah, yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pirostek Karvalo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item six D, consider rezoning request for property of 2400 Line Road.
Good morning, Council. Jim Sike Nader, interim planning and development director. I'm here this morning based on a unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission review and approval from PEC and the planning staff. We asked that the city council accept and approve the request to rezone 2400 Line Road from a C4 special commercial district to a I3 heavy industrial district, and asked that the city council adopt an ordinance for publication of the said zoning change. And I'll show you a few slides here to show you the property. It's located right out by Highway 50, pretty familiar, been in business for a long, long time. The future land use does match the industrial zoning change. And what they'd like to do is to add on to their existing building to the east and the kind of the gray shaded area there to, and that would mean they will be handling some heavy, and as they already do, some heavy equipment, which led to the review from PEC to change it from the C4 to the more industrial type use. And you'll see a few pictures here of the neighboring properties. That's to the north. And then there's kind of a view of their building in the parking lot. East of the subject property is the access to Highway 50. And based on the following factors, the Planning Commission, PEC, and staff find the factors for approval have been met to rezone the property at 2400 Line Road. That the zoning uses, there's a mix of uses all around in that area, everything from residential to commercial to industrial and public, with Cary Park being to the west. The suitability of the property for its current zoning and use compared to the proposed zoning. The subject site is currently zone C4, but is developed with an industrial use. The surrounding area has several industrial uses, including to the south and east. Extent to the removal of restriction will be detrimental to the nearby property. Staff does not anticipate detrimental impacts on nearby properties as this site is already developed with an industrial use and has been in business for quite a while. There's also a factor about how long the property's been vacant, but in this case, B&amp;B Hydraulics has been a successful business and employer for many, many years. Conformance of the requested change and recognized comprehensive plan and product policies. The proposed use is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan identifies the site is industrial on the comprehensive planned land use map. The gain to public health, safety, and welfare compared to any hardship, the staff does not expect a relative, any sort of gain or any short, sort of hardship. And the impact of the proposed development on community facilities, again, the staff does not expect any significant impact to roads, water, or sewer service as this site has already been developed and highly used. We did hold a public hearing on the 29th of November, and that minutes are attached with the staff report. The planning staff recommended approval of the request to better match the intended new use and a better match to the future land use of the area. And their recommendation is based on all the factors having been met after a PEC review and staff analysis. There were no comments from the public received at the public hearing or during the 14-day protests following that decision. And again, the official minutes are attached to this as exhibit three. So the Planning Commission approved on November 29th by a vote of 7-0 for the special commercial, C4 special commercial district to I4 heavy industrial district to accommodate the planned expansion by B&amp;B Hydraulics and allow them future expansion by right and the ability to work on heavy industrial-sized equipment with a special use permit. That was also passed by the Board of Zoning Appeals at that same meeting, 7-0. So we would definitely recommend your approval and the resolution that would support this action.
Thank you, Jim. I have no problem with the rezoning, but I do have a question about point of process. If there is a request for rezoning to a new designation that conforms with our comprehensive plan, why does that still have to go before the council?
Well, it's more about the resolution. That's really what we're asking the council for is the resolution of the, basically approving their decision. But, but it is a good question because there's so many of these where we're looking at a piece of ground that was never, that was not started in the city. It was outside the city, was eventually brought into the city. And that does create a lot of issues and challenges as you try to propose regulations and planning that is set up to be in nice, you know, lots and city blocks and things like that to areas like this that weren't developed in that manner to start with. So that's one of the things we'll be working with PEC on is to try to come up with things that make a little more common sense for areas that have already been built and lived in for a number of years, but yet won't set a precedent that then someone else could use in the area where it's always been planned and platted and zoned, so.
Yeah, I know it's a really delicate balance, but it would just be nice if businesses who wanted to expand wouldn't necessarily have to go through one more hoop if it already conformed to our plan. I could totally understand if it didn't. And we obviously want to be mindful of, of neighbors and how that impacts. So I understand the need for it to some extent, but just didn't really understand why it couldn't be made administratively, but that, that makes sense, so thanks for.
I can actually answer that question. You're just approving the zoning map being amended.
Okay.
That's all you're doing.
And that's not something that can be done administratively?
Well, because you approved the original zoning map.
But we also approved a comprehensive plan with future land use.
I understand, approval for future land use, but the map is established by the council, and if it's going to be amended, you have to do it.
Okay. Well. Yay for bureaucracy.
Well, I'd be, I'd, I'd make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the zoning map referred to in section 27-402 of chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hutchinson as adopted by ordinance number 9518 and repealing certain parts of the original zoning map as designed in section 27-402, 2400 Line Road, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further questions?
I do. What's there's to in a C4 and what we're going to now? What's the difference between the two?
Well, it's the heavy equipment side of things. It takes the industrial distinction to be able to work on the heavier weighted equipment and things. C4 is designed more for cars and, you know, light trucks and that type of thing. So originally, we were in hopes we would just do the special use permit on the C4, but under the review, and this will be better in the long run for B&amp;B because that's the type of equipment they work on, so.
Got you. So we had a second, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Abstain.
Pirostek Karvalo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Thank you very much. And as we work with PEC on best practices, maybe we can simplify some of that bureaucracy.
Thank you, Jim. I know you, you do a great job, so thank you. Okay, next item.
Item seven A, consider 2023 Service Employees International Union Memorandum of Understanding.
Good morning, Council. Tom Sanders, Human Resources Director. The city of the SEIU bargaining unit began formal negotiations back in March 29th and continued through August 25th. Unfortunately, we did not come to agreement, and the, the parties jointly declared impasse with Herb on August 25th. The impasse declaration solely focused on base pay adjustments, including our merit matrix pool, union's request for ECOLA, lump sum bonuses related to COVID, and supplemental pay adjustments. The fact-finding hearing was conducted on November 8th, and the opinion was issued on the 21st. Fact-finder opinion aligned with the city's best and final offer from the August 25th session with the SEIU, but suggested that the city could also provide a bonus to employees that were hired before December 31st, 2021, kind of coinciding with COVID. After the fact-finder's opinion was discussed with the city council, the city, city was authorized to offer a $1,000 bonus with the criteria being slightly modified to have the hire date be before December 31st, 2019, so that, for those that worked through the whole pandemic. The, the MOU summary of changes include Article 5, which is payroll deduction of dues, like what we previously passed for FOP and IFF, it provides indemnification language in case there's any disputes between the employee and the union. And also aligns the authorization and discontinuance of withholdings of payroll dues through payroll with our other bargaining units, again, the FOP, IFF, and also the SEIU dispatch group. Base pay administration, which is Article 18, updates Appendix A, which reflects a 2% movement of the wage scales, a widening of grades above grade two, and new placement of SEIU-covered jobs based on 2023 market data. It also updates the merit matrix found in Appendix B to reflect the 3.5% pool that we were authorized. And also, it includes retroactive base pay adjustments to July 3rd of 2022 to cover those employees that covered merit, that got merit increases in 2019 and 2021. And depending on their past performance ratings and how long they were here, it could, that, that adjustment could be up to 3.5%. And then last but not least was the $1,000 one-time lump sum bonus for our bargaining unit members that were hired before December 31st, 2019. And then on Article 20, hours of work, section four has been updated to increase on-call pay from $10.50 to $16 per full weekday, and then from $18.50 to $24 for each weekend day or designated holiday.
I, I kind of, I know we, it was kind of a long year negotiating, and we kind of weren't quite seeing eye to eye, but I would like to address these issues. I'd actually kind of like to go over the list backwards. For the, the holiday leave, adding Martin Luther King Day, we appreciate that. We want to thank you for that. The after-hours duty requirements increase in the pager pay, we appreciate that. The retroactive base pay adjustments, we appreciate that. We do see that that's definitely something good for the, the workers. The, the lump sum bonus has upset a lot of the employees. A lot of them were on a list to get some. It was up to, it was 88 employees, and it's been reduced to 56, so there's about 30 employees out there that are pretty upset they got cut off. A lot of them did work through COVID, but I do understand that you, you know, you need to do what you need to do based on that. The 2% movement of the wage scales, I'm not really clear. I think the city's in good financial situation right now. I don't understand why we're reducing starting wages on the pay grades three, four, and five. That does bother me. We're having trouble filling positions, and we're reducing our starting wages. They did do a wage study, and I understand that has to be city to city. You have to have apples to apples to compare. But I don't know of very many employees that are going to relocate to Salina, Wichita, Manhattan, Garden City Dodge City, or even Enid, Oklahoma, which was the comparison cities, for $2 or $3 an hour. Where they will go is to Dylan's Warehouse, Collins Bus, Coon Kraus, they're all advertising starting at $18 to $20 an hour. Those, in my opinion, those are a lot of our competition for employees. When the employees get upset over feeling they got slighted over an issue in here, and then you have those companies that are actively, you know, recruiting people for that kind of money, it's, it's tough to hold on to them. And these are some good employees that I hate to see us lose. A lot of them have a lot of knowledge, experience, certifications, and everything that, that are important to the city. city. And then the other item, which is a major stumbling block for us, is the change in the dues deduction. In our contract, Article 3 is management's rights, and it's over a page of items that we understand are management's rights. And, you know, we're fine with that. We understand that they have the right to address and handle business, you know, scheduling, what needs done, all that stuff. And we don't even attempt to, you know, address or change or challenge any of those items. But when it comes to our membership and how we conduct our business with our members, it seems to me that for the city to tell us how to, when to allow our members to resign, seemed like, to me, that's overstepping a little bit. Tom mentioned that he's trying to get all the units aligned with the city. We understand that. That's exactly what we have now. We have the City of Wichita, the City of Hutchinson, and the Wichita School District all have the same policy. It's all set up in our bylaws that they have, we negotiate one-year contracts. They have the third days prior to the expiration of that contract to resign for any reason. It's their open, you know, it's their drop month. We also, though, as being a member of the executive board, we do handle situations that come up all through the year. People come up, they have a hardship, maybe their spouse lost their job or something, and we handle those all the times. And the majority of times, we do allow those people to drop when it's not in the normal cycle. But that's how we conduct our business as a union. And so people still have the option, if they have a good reason to address the executive board, and they can drop anytime. But that's how we deal with our memberships. And we don't think the city should be labeled to determine when we allow our members to drop. We do, like I said, we negotiate a one-year contract. We expect them to join. And if they join in August, they have just a few months till they can drop. They join in February. If it's a one-year contract, their option to drop is in December. So again, I do appreciate the, everything that extended out to our employees. And, you know, we, I tried to explain to employees that it may not be everything you want, but that's why you negotiate, to find something that works for both sides equally. So that's really all I have to address. I don't know if our business agent would like to mention or address that.
Good morning.
Hi, guys. Esau Freeman, 67208. That's Wichita, Kansas. I'm the business representative for SEIU Local 513. And we did go ahead and conduct a vote of the members. And, you know, to be perfectly honest, our members were split 50-50. They, some were mad about certain things, and some were like, hey, we want to get this over with and move on. However, there were two points that Greg has brought up, and one was the bonuses. And, you know, we had been given a list earlier on where certain people were going to get 500 and others were going to get 1,000. And you don't have to answer this publicly, but did, I hope that you guys have had an opportunity to see what the arbitrator's response was because I think the arbitrator suggested that you use $100,000 worth of those ARPA funds to do that. And if you've only got 80-some employees, you still won't even match what the arbitrator had suggested with the bonuses. We clearly don't understand why the city would push it back to people who were here in 2019 only or hired before that time because you hired a lot of people during COVID, and they did come in, and they risked their health and their family's health to make sure that the city kept running. And that is a really sore spot with your employees. If you, if you want to show them appreciation, you might reconsider how you plan to distribute those. And the other thing is that when it comes to Article, the payroll deductions, I think he said it was Article 5, our problem there is, is we never tentatively agreed to that. If Tom can produce a paper that shows that I initialed a TA like I do with every other contract, then fine, I will, I will say, okay, we agreed to it. But I know that doesn't exist. And so when you're being told that I TA'd on something as the lead negotiator, I did not. What I did do is agree that that was a permissive item in bargaining and that I understood that it could not go on to the impasse portion. But that's never something we tentatively agreed to. One of the reasons that we typically have members want to get out of the union is because they see their paycheck and they get mad at decisions that you guys made or ideas that Tom had. And they want to be mad at us and say, hey, I can't pay my bills, so I'm going to quit the union. But it's not our fault. We're still there providing the services, and we're actually obligated by law to represent those employees. And we represent them to the fullest of their ability, whether they're a member or not. And I will also tell you that this year, because I figured the question would be asked, we went ahead and opened up the opportunity for non-members to vote for this contract as well. And in all honesty, the non-members accepted the contract by 60% as opposed to the 50-50 from the members. However, they had quite a few more comments than the members did. And each one of their comments, I will be happy to share with you. I assume you probably don't want me to just read them publicly. I think some of them might be a little sterner than something I should probably read at a city council meeting, but there's some definite feelings from your employee group about the way management wants to negotiate. It's been my understanding, in the eight years I've been doing this, that we are doing interest-based bargaining. And that means that together, we're trying to come up with the best solution for everybody. However, in the last two years, I feel like I've been playing a game of Monopoly with a mean relative who doesn't want to engage in interest-based bargaining. They simply want to take away and win. And so if we do want to serve the employees that serve this community and make sure that they're taken care of, I hope that the city council will do a good job of taking the reins and making sure that the employees are actually taken care of. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
I think you have one more.
Okay. Hope to.
Jack Neber, 67501. Great city of Hutchinson. I just want to say thank you for letting me work for the city of Hutchinson. I left for six months. I came back, but I came back in February of 2020. I worked through the whole pandemic. I don't know where they got the date, December 19th, because we didn't even know what COVID was in December 19th. But that's not a big deal to me. I don't care about that. Just remember this, 2008, that's the last cost of living raise we got.
Okay, other comments? Tom, did you want to comment on why we chose that 2019 date versus the 2020? I know we went back and forth on that.
Yeah. The, so after we got the fact finders opinion, we went to executive session and discussed it. And basically, that was the date that the city council came up with is that date. So that's, and so that's what we put in the contract. So.
How was that meeting I wasn't at? We went back and forth many, many times on that. I felt pretty.
So we decided not to do any prorated?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question?
We decided not to do any of the prorated based off of.
I think we just had a clean break to try to get everybody who had been employed before the pandemic started.
Yeah.
At the time, we actually had hiring freezes, but we didn't implement those until, I think, March. And so we did lose about.
Yeah. COVID really didn't get started in earnest until March, late March, as I recall. And, you know, we had all kinds of contingency plans for freezing this and holding that and so on and so forth. And luckily for everybody, we didn't, didn't have to go there. No employee lost their job, which we were really fearful of. We got pay raises through all that. So, you know, compared to some of the peer cities that I interact with, we came out smelling like a rose.
And compared to the private sector, where a lot of people lost their jobs.
Not to say that it was easy for anybody, because it wasn't. But.
I guess I'm just confused why we don't do any prorated for some of the people that started before March.
I think we, I mean, we had multiple executive sessions about it and had consensus on that date. So.
Yeah. And that was, that was one of the options that was presented to the union of doing a different scenario in place of the mid-year adjustments and that kind of thing. And again, the fact finder came back and said, you know, city's proposal made more sense. But oh, by the way, if you can afford it, and you wanted to, you could do this additional bonus.
It sounds to me like, aside from the discrepancy on the bonuses, the biggest sticking point is this, the feature of allowing employees to leave the union when they want. And so I, I really struggle. SEIU is the only bargaining unit that is allowed to continue taking money out of paychecks when employees no longer want to be in the union. And I, for consistency's sake, and also just to allow employees control over their wages, I don't feel comfortable taking that provision out. I don't know how the rest of the council does.
You didn't get a TA on it. I used to be the president of SEIU. You got to have a TA that they agree. We didn't give him a TA. So actually, I think the SEIU is right. You got to, I would negotiate it before. And every TA means that both sides agreed on it. It's not a place where they, we have a handshake. It's done on paperwork.
But Steve, none of the other unions get that.
You can't do the other unions. Every union's different. You can't do other unions. They're all different. In SEIU, they have a certain way they do stuff. Now, I wouldn't be sitting here saying anything to you if they did a TA on it. They put it on paper saying, we agree with you. So go in there and force them to do something, and the SEIU to do something. No. No. No, no way you're going to force them if they put a TA and say, we agree with you. So.
If I could interject a little bit on that. This, so this whole, the whole topic, and Esau mentioned it, it's a permissive topic. So the city has always done this, but it is under no requirement to do it at all. It's a free service. We provide the union. And quite frankly, the reason why we want to do it is, you know, we're being a little bit in the spirit of Janus, which is, was a ruling that came out from the Supreme Court in 2018 that, you know, basically said you can't compel an employee to pay union dues. It has not been tested in this district, the federal district. But on top of that, the city doesn't want to have to be the enforcer for the agreement between the employee and the union. So we're not saying that the union, if they have an employee sign a contract, that, hey, you're going to be paying dues this whole year, that they still can't enforce that. We, it just would have to be outside of the payroll deduction that we provide. So that, and that's a, that's a caveat that I think sometimes gets lost.
Okay, so there's still a mechanism for the union, if it so chooses to enter into an agreement?
Yeah, they could. I mean, it's, again, that agreement is signed by the employee with the union, not with the city.
Okay.
And again, we don't want to be, because occasionally, it hasn't happened often. And quite frankly, I think this whole issue, I know it's a bit of an emotional thing, but I don't think it's going to be a big issue at the end of the day because I think the people that are members, by and large, are members, and they believe in.
Have their own volition.
The union, and they're, you know, they're going to stay in it. But I really think it's, it's probably not going to be that big a deal. But we don't want to be in the middle between, and it's happened before, an upset employee, for whatever reason, could be they just, maybe they don't like the contract, maybe the, whatever. If they just decide they don't want to do it anymore, ask us to stop, and we say, yeah, we can. So.
Well, I think that Greg and Esau's leadership is, has proven to be very effective in negotiating much more favorable contracts than in, probably in the past. And so I feel confident that members will choose to stay if they want to stay. But I don't, I don't feel comfortable with compelling anybody to spend their money on something if they choose not to. I don't know where the rest of the council stands. I know where Steve stands. But it's an issue that we, like, we need to get a contract in place. We need to get these people paid, backpaid, et cetera. So if we want movement on that, we'll have to.
Madam Mayor?
Vote on it again next meeting. Sure.
I, I think part of the problem here isn't about people being able to get out. I don't think Tom's an expert on Janus, but I know that the people at our international union who have dealt with those federal laws are. And we had them write up our new signup form. So it specifically has language in there that shows that the employee is not being compelled to do anything. So when they sign up, they understand that they're going to be in the union for a year. And they know that at the beginning. And these problems that Tom is suggesting exist, I have in eight years never had an occurrence of. And this is something that on a yearly basis, outside forces that are associated with the Koch brothers come into Kansas, and they fly Janus into Kansas every year to try to make the unions have to re-sign up members every year. They come in and they try to make us do dues deductions through different bank drafts rather than through the employer. However, you will let your employees give a contribution to the United Way. Okay? Same thing. The only reason we ended up getting into this particular discussion is we submitted the item for negotiations that employees be able to donate to an additional political fund. Never said anything about getting rid of this. And Tom's offer to come back was not to compromise and say, well, we really don't want to do that. We want the indemnity clause, which you guys have always had with us. We have never held you responsible for any finances that were overpaid. And he came back and he said, not only are we not going to accept the political contributions, we don't even want to pull the dues deductions anymore now unless you give us the indemnity clause and people get out whenever they want. That is the city coming into union bust. That is the city coming in telling us how we're supposed to do business with our members on a legally signed document. Okay? We don't come in and violate management rights, just as Greg said. So, you know, Tom can tell you this, and you can tell the public that, well, hey, I want people to have a choice. However, you're interfering in something that's legal between us and the employee and not. And half of what you're being told isn't true.
I think what it comes down to is the payroll deduction that the city does is something that we do as.
As a courtesy? But you've been doing it for over 25 years?
Yeah.
Esau, I, I'm going to take issue with the idea of union busting because I don't feel like the IAFF and the FOP are weak unions that aren't caring for their employees. And it's my understanding, I may be misunderstanding, that they don't have the same clause. And so.
Correct.
Why, why would we treat SEIU differently?
Good question. And I would ask why you treat SEIU different in other areas, like you give the police department and the fire department an opportunity to meet in person and sign people up for the union. I've never been allowed to go down into the dispatch area and do that. We don't get to do that with our employees. So if you guys want things to be the same as Tom suggests with the police department and fire, let's get a me-too clause in every one of our contracts, and what they get, we get. Because the problem is, is you guys are conflating and picking and choosing where you want the contracts to be the same. If the police are getting a 13% pay increase, city workers are getting seven, and dispatchers are getting 11, and fire departments getting a new truck and a good raise, you're paying police and fire enough that they don't have to quit the union to pay groceries. But you're not paying people like Jack, or Greg, or any of these other folks enough money that they, you know, they have to sometimes decide between their union dues and their medications, or their union dues and their insurance.
I think we index based on market. We index based on market, and we don't, we don't need to hash out the entire negotiating process here today. I'm just trying to get a feel for, I'm one person.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe people should be able to choose whether they're in or out of a union based on their willingness and ability to pay. I don't know how the rest of the council feels. If you want that provision in, we're going to have to probably amend the contract and come back in two weeks.
No, you don't. You just have to say, go ahead, sir.
Mayor, please let me interject here. You've gone so far afield of what's really before the council.
Say again, Paul?
I said, you've gone so far afield of the issue that's actually before the council. Because the issue before the council is what was submitted at impasse. And those were all wage issues, all wage. And those were all wage issues. All wage issues. This idea of collection of union dues is not before the council at all because it wasn't put into impasse. It wasn't reviewed by the fact finder. You are not here on that issue.
You can't take permissive items to impasse, Paul. That's simply a rule of the game that you're using to not let us have our voice.
Well, actually, what it is, is an end run to the council, and you're trying to renegotiate the contract again. If it's that important to them, negotiations open up next month, and we can take it up again.
Well, I, I would be in favor of doing that so that we can get a contract passed and take care of our people to the best of our abilities now.
Okay.
But there's a lot of heat, and something needs to be done to improve the relationship between our leadership in the unions and our people who we very much want to take care of and, and management. And so I'm hopeful that the next phase of negotiations will be more congenial, and we, we can come to some of these decisions without waiting months and months and going to impasse.
Could I make an ask then before?
I'm going to go back to the bonus. I don't understand where we picked 2019. I mean, we're in what year now? In what budget year are we approving? I don't understand the, I apologize. I was not at that executive session, so. I, that's the only thing I'm, I don't understand.
The, the discussion on that was because it's, it's, it's based on pandemic, working through the pandemic.
We didn't even know coronavirus existed in December 2019.
But people that were hired prior to that date for sure worked through the entire pandemic.
And people hired in March for sure worked through the pandemic. People hired in July for sure worked through the pandemic. People hired in November.
Well, we, we actually froze all in hiring in, in March, so it would have been those three months.
But that was where the discussion was based on.
But then we unfroze hiring. Pandemic went for like two years.
There's still 15 or 16 job openings in, you know, down at Public Works. I, I found it.
I just don't understand why the cutoff date isn't where we froze hiring, like to March. I don't understand that. And proration for anybody in the last two years that, I don't understand your December 2019. I am over here like that doesn't make any sense to me at all.
Mayor, moving forward, I, I think looking forward to next year's negotiations. We've, we've long wanted a council member or somebody to sit on there, but I was, had something brought to my attention earlier this year at a training, and I wonder if you guys would be open to it. More of a process of open negotiations. Right now, we do something that's very closed doors with just a couple of us, and not everybody gets the information, but we'd like to be able to have the meetings maybe negotiate in the evening when a council member could attend, not be at work, and also members can attend. And instead of just having six people, let's have a larger portion of the work group involved in that so that, that more people can speak out about what they want, because I think that's one of the things that we're missing. You can call it lost in translation. You can call it gamesmanship. But I don't really think we're working in a, in a positive, interest-based direction together.
Well, we, we have a new city manager starting at the beginning of the year, and I would like to better understand his background and ideas around negotiations before we blow it all up, two weeks before he starts. So I will defer that conversation until Kendall Francis gets on board. Encourage you to reach out to him when he starts on January 9.
Or also, I'd be happy if you guys reached out and we could all sit down and talk, or in a small group to figure some things out. I know we can't have everyone there all the time, but I really would like to get a fresh start and get that taken care of. So thank you for that offer.
Thank you. Further comments or emotion on this item?
I'd like to make a, first of all, when we was in our, we're kind of tied our hands, but we can't talk about what's in the back here. I have a lot of things to say, but I can't. So as far as the, and it's no secret that I was a state president for SEIU, so I know SEIU quite well. Number one, we don't, as I was in there, if a person wants to get out of the union, they go to the, the board, and the board will let them out if, if, if it's a good reason. So they have a way out. They go to our executive board that I used to sit on, and they tell us what the problem is, and 99.9% they get out. So there's no hold on them. Okay? So that thing going around, that rumor is, is not true, because I used to sit on the executive board. So as, as far as the wage sting, a number was sent out to us when we was in there, and we didn't, we didn't, I don't know, I didn't bother to look into it. So I don't know. I would make a move that we take out the dues part and pass the other part of it. That's what I would say do. That's my motion.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, motion fails. Is there an alternative motion?
I have a motion with an amendment that the cutoff date go to the day that we froze, which would be in March, to allow more bonuses for people that worked through the pandemic. So to move off the December 2019 to March 2020.
Okay, is there a motion, a second to that motion?
I actually, in the, in the spirit of what that discussion was when we had it, I actually, I, I agree with that. I would second that.
Tom, when can you come back with new numbers on that and the impact to the budget?
Yeah, it shouldn't take too long. But the other, just throwing out an option, sir, you know, having got to the dispatch contract, but that was one of, there was some, that'd be something to think about. So in that contract, it was one of the city's options that we had, had given them. That was $1,000 if you were hired before February 28th, 21. And then
20 or 21?
21. And then and if we were hired from March and July 21, it went down to 500.
But why 21 instead of 20? I thought we, I thought we made those dates.
The hired before. So
Oh, just so we could, so we could get more people in there.
Right, right. And then again, the people that got hired towards the very tail end of the pandemic are getting paid as the people that worked before, basically almost a year and a half, 18 months.
Do we?
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Do we know the impact if we did that for SEIU?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Do we know the budgetary impact if we did that for SEIU?
It would probably pretty, be pretty similar to where we're at with, what the council directed us to do in the last contract. It probably, again, I would need to run the numbers on it, but I don't think it's, would be
Well, I would prefer that those be consistent.
What's that?
I would prefer that they be consistent.
Yeah.
That's such a small amount. Let's just do that.
I mean, for what it's worth, personally, I'd like to be consistent.
Yeah.
So.
So let's.
So.
Would you be comfortable amending?
Amending it to reflect the same as the
As the dispatch contract.
Dispatch contract for proration.
Okay, John, what about?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, further comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Iris DeCarolla?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 7B, consider 2023 Service Employees International Union Memorandum of Understanding Primary Emergency Communication Effects.
Oh, one minute, Mayor. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did, did, what we passed include the taking the, not stopping, not doing the dues? What? What did we pass? We passed, I know, more money.
We only touched on funds with that resolution.
Just on the additional bonuses to people.
So the dues are going to be took out? Are we going to go with the dues, or what?
That wasn't on the resolution for us to discuss.
So you're still going to take the dues out, right? Are you going to take it to the other ones?
Tom, do you want to explain moving forward?
Well, what I understand what you guys just passed was the, the language, which was in our best and final.
Yeah.
Yeah. And as Paul mentioned, we'll be opening up negotiations again here shortly, and so we can talk about that further. And, you know, if, if the SEIU's worst fears come to, come to pass, that's, I think, a worthy discussion. But I personally, I don't think that will happen, but nobody has a crystal ball that's 100% accurate, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I have one comment about that. You said, you know, you, you have a contract that they sign so that they're not like coerced into it. But just in my head, it seems like the city's being coerced into being the, the bill collector for all year for you.
Do you feel like it's coercion with the United Way?
No, do they make them, do they make them do that if they?
They take it out of the United Way, and if they sign up, then the United Way, they've signed up for
Oh, oh, they can't get out of the United Way if they say, hey?
If they say, hey, I can't afford it, maybe I said that I'd do 25 bucks a paycheck, but I really need to reduce that or eliminate it, you know, that's, that
There's no problem.
We honor that, yeah. We have to. That's Kansas Wage Payment Law.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, well, I, I'm just curious. I don't, I, I can't reconcile those in my head. If you're telling me that you don't want to coerce somebody into becoming a union member, and that, that language is all in their contract, but yet you want us to coerce the employee to, to have to pay those dues if they don't want to? Is that what we're talking about?
No, we're saying you, you send them to us. You don't just stop their dues. You send them to us, and we work it out with them. Because most of the time, if somebody, you want me to hit the mic?
No, I, I, I think we need to call the question on this. So will you please call the roll, Linda? Oh, wait, we've already called the roll. We've already called the roll. So we're not going
We're done with that item.
Go on to dispatch.
I just, I just knew.
I know, but we're not going to resolve it today, and we've already voted on that piece.
I understand.
We're not going to resolve it.
We're, we're going to talk about it again, though, right?
We're going to, yeah. Yeah, because it's the same union. It's just a different. Okay. Please move on.
I had already in that section.
Okay, okay, so I'm, I'm, gotcha. I'm on track now. The city and the dispatch union had one formal negotiation meeting, which occurred on August 19. We were not able to reach agreement on the economic package, and so a joint declaration of impasse was filed with Purb on August 25. Like the bigger group, the, the sole issues were economic in nature, which included the merit matrix pool, the COLA request by the union, lump sum bonuses related to COVID, and, and special pay adjustments. On October 7, the city provided a, a new wage scale proposal based on recently released, at the time, market data that moved the bottom of the wage scale for dispatchers up 11.8%. We did not get a response back from the union on that proposal prior to fact finding, so we proceeded to fact finding, which was held on the 23rd of November. As part of that process, the fact finder asked both parties to formalize their best and final offer in the, in the form of actual contract language. In doing so, the union's language mirrored the city's October 7 proposal as it related to the wage scale and supplemental pay adjustments. But the union also added the lump sum bonus that mirrored the city's, one of the city's options that was presented to the union on August 19. On December 12, the fact finder's opinion was issued, and it recommended the city's October 7 proposal on wage scale and supplemental pay. But it also, he, his opinion was to add the lump sum bonus proposal that was requested by the union. The actual contract modifications included Article 5 of payroll deduction, which we just talked about. It, again, with, with this group, it was not a significant change, because they already allowed their members to withdraw from the union at any time. But it also included that indemnification protection that we hadn't had in the language before. Article 14, which covers wages, updates Appendix A to the, reflect the 11.8% increase in the wage scale based on the 2023 market pricing data. Updates the merit matrix found in Appendix B to reflect 3.5%. And provides the retroactive pay adjustments back to July 3, 2022 for those employees that received merit increases in 2019 and 21. Again, depending on how they scored in the performance appraisal, that could be up to a 3.5% increase. And then the last item under Article 5 is adding the lump sum bonus to the employees that were actively employed on January 1, 2023, and met the following criteria. If they were hired before February 28, 2021, it's $1,000. If they were hired between March 1 and July 30, 2021, that was $500. And then lastly, the holiday leave article, which is Article 19, there's an additional eight hours added to their bank to reflect the addition of the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. So to the designated list. Questions?
Questions?
I'm good with this one.
Is there a motion on this one?
I'll make the motion to approve the, the proposed 2023 Memorandum of Understanding with the Service Employees International Union, HR, CEC, Local 513 Bargaining Unit, and authorize the merit design.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Iris DeCarolla?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 8A, report to city officials.
All right, let's start with you, Garza.
Me? Okay. As everybody knows, the youth council's going to start tonight. Like to see many citizens we can there. It's going to be a new thing for these kids. They're going to sit right here. They're going to be sworn in at 6 o'clock this evening. Please come out and support them. They're anxious. They want to start this council. I've already seen what they, the things they have on the, what they want for the next meeting. You're going to be really impressed with these young kids and what ideas they come up with. I'm really impressed. I'm looking forward for this meeting tonight. So please come out and support them. And they're going to be every third, the, the, the second meeting of the month, they're going to be right here having their meeting, and hopefully we'll get along, get these kids, be Hutchonians, and stay here. That's the whole goal behind it. And they're excited, and I'm excited. So hopefully you guys come out. Citizen Hudson, please support them. Other than that, I had a meeting last month with the peers in my, in my district, really good peers. They came out, and we talked a lot, and we got things, they listen to me, and I tell them what's going on. So that's really working really out. And the people that come to my meetings, I really appreciate it. When you see my meetings come up, I do it every two months. So probably in February, I'd do it again. Please come out and talk to us and sit down and talk. That's how we solve things. We get things solved, okay? Other than that, Ms. Mayor, that's all I got.
Okay, great. What about you, Greg?
I would like to emphasize, I will be there this evening as well. I'm excited about that. There's some very bright kids
Yes.
in that group of people that are going to be on the youth city council tonight at 6 o'clock. I, I would like to say I do appreciate the work that all of our city employees do, and, and the relationship that, that we have with them. I, I, I don't know what more I can say about that. I, I, I look forward to hearing from you, Esau, and we'll, we'll visit a little bit. I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and that's all I have.
Thank you. What about you, John?
I won't be able to make it tonight for the youth city council, but I think it's very important. I, I think they're a good group. Merry Christmas. I, I would like to note, it's always good to be good neighbors, and if you have some neighbors that are elderly or may have some issues, check on them here over the next couple of days with the cold weather coming in. I think it's going to be pretty nasty, and I think it might take some people by surprise. So that's all I have.
Okay, great. You're up, Sarah.
Well, I just wanted to say that the weather is going to be happy. Merry Christmas, and I have an announcement to make. After careful thought and consideration, I am resigning my position here on city council. I have personal and family matters that have taken up much of my time, and because of this, I feel my family comes first and is very important to me, and I need to focus on my family right now. And I cannot, I've been having difficulty finding the time to do this position at the moment with the year that I have had. So I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to serve the city. But I will not be doing my, I have one more year left, and this will be my last city council meeting.
Well, Sarah, I think I speak for Well, Sarah, I think I speak for the council when I say that we've really appreciated the perspective you bring. You challenge us to see things differently and you really listen to people, you take the time to get back to them and I respect immensely your decision because I know you've had a hard time serving to the degree that you really want to and it just really shows your integrity that you're choosing your family first. I know it's been a really tough decision for you and we look forward to seeing what you do next. I know you've got a new job and it's a big, a lot more responsibility as well, so I just want to thank you for your service and the way you've helped me see things differently. I believe the council will be charged with appointing your replacement, so we need to have some sort of conversation about what kind of process we want to go through to do that. In the past, it has been just a mere appointment. City manager and I talked about perhaps we could have something a little more formal such as an application opportunity so that anybody who was interested in serving could express their interest. I wanted to get your thoughts on that, but I did write down some of the time commitments for people out there who might be interested in applying or being appointed to this role, however we decide to do it. It is a pretty, it is a pretty big time commitment. So if you've ever considered running for local elected office, I just want to kind of outline some of the time commitments. So it's not a full-time job, but it's also not as part-time as most people might think. The time commitment varies each week, but here are the basic expectations. City council meetings are on the first and third Tuesday of the month and they typically run 90 minutes to up to four hours. As they take place during the workday, you'll need flexibility in your job or be retired in order to serve. There are also executive sessions added on to many of the end of our council meetings. They're ad hoc, closed-door sessions that follow council meetings and they can add one to two hours on top of the regular council meetings. And most often, they concern union negotiations, personnel issues, or economic development projects. You'll also need a few hours to review the council agenda packet prior to the meetings on Tuesday. The agenda is available on the city website each Thursday before the meeting. And they're usually a few hundred pages in length, so it's important to read these packets thoroughly so you can follow up with calls for clarification or visits to properties referenced in the packet before the council meeting. Also, just basic responding to calls and emails from constituents is a really big piece of this. Calls, texts, emails. Special study sessions, these occur several times a year, usually run 90 minutes to three hours. Some examples are joint sessions with the Hutchinson Recreation Commission to discuss the park's master plan, joint sessions with county commissioners, sessions to dive deeper into topics, budget sessions. In years past, the councils had four, four to six two-hour budget sessions in June and July in addition to the council meetings. We have a new city manager coming, so that may be done differently. And then typically, meetings with state legislators once or twice a year for an hour. There are trainings and additional readings and webinar if you want to stay on top of changes in local governance issues, those are totally optional. Other time commitments optional, such as this evening's thing with Youth City Council, ribbon cuttings, et cetera. So also wanted to share the reminder that there is no monetary compensation for this position, but it is hugely rewarding in other ways. So I hope I didn't just...
You're really good at talking about that stuff.
Discourage people, but I just want to be, I just want to be real about the time commitment because it can be very taxing on your family and on your professional development and your free time, so. But if you have a heart and a passion for public service, we're gonna be looking for someone to fill Sarah's shoes for the next year. I'm curious what the council feels on a process.
I have no problem with the process of having people apply for it.
I hadn't considered that process.
I know that's how they did it. They do it in the legislature. Typically, those are partisan, so the local party will allow people to apply for the role and then the precinct chairman usually, or chair people, I'm sorry, pick. But we would be charged with picking based on applications and Gary thought it might make more sense to issue an application like on January 3rd after the holidays and then give people until the end of the day on the 16th before a meeting and then we could, at our next meeting, well, not our next meeting, the second meeting in January, review those applications.
Can we just have them fill out the application that you fill out to run for the elected office for city council?
Or a commission, one of our commissions.
Right.
You know, have you paid your taxes and what is your background?
Correct.
We could if you think it's gonna be sufficient to select someone.
I'm curious, Sarah, what are your thoughts on how to replace you?
Impossible.
Yeah. No, do you have any strong...
Do I get to recommend somebody?
Do you have strong feelings about it?
I would hope that when you're going through the process, that you replace me with somebody that has the same views and brings something similar so that you're replacing a particular, like viewpoints, because that's what the citizens voted in. Voted in. So I would highly encourage you to think about when you're putting somebody in my place, what are their views and stances? And try to get somebody similar. That would, I would appreciate that. I know you don't have to, but I would appreciate that.
Add a little, add the balance that we have.
Yeah.
Gary, I don't know if that gives you enough direction. Does it? Okay.
Sarah, I'd like to say something. Thank you for your service. I know, I sit on it, I know how hard it is. It's very, very hard and I know it took a lot to make this decision. So like I said, we don't get paid and we take a lot of pressure, so.
It really is fun though, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, it's a lot of fun.
You want to do it. You want to do it, people.
That's true. All right.
It is rewarding. You mentioned that. It is rewarding in so many different ways. For me, anyway. I'll speak for me, I'm not speaking for everybody.
That's okay, yeah.
I do, I find, I mean, I learn so much. It's so good for me to learn and to listen.
Let's put it this way, I was black hair when I started here. And you had hair. But Sarah, thank you very much for your service.
I often say that's how I met Greg. You called to yell at me before you were on council.
Why do you bring that up all the time?
Well, because I think it goes to show that if people just take the time to listen to one another, even if they have vastly divergent views, they could become really good friends.
Well, I don't think it was, I don't think you disagreed with me that much.
Yeah.
Is that you being a good politician?
Oh, I don't know. Maybe I was being your therapist.
Listen, I appreciate your friendship and Sarah, I appreciate your friendship as well. That's gorgeous.
Best of luck. Well, the only other item I had is I wanted to ask about the airport advisory board. I thought we were making those appointments today.
We were supposed to and I haven't heard on that, so I will certainly check into that.
And yeah, it's not a big deal. I almost reached out this weekend, but it can wait, another meeting. And Merry Christmas to everyone. Please stay safe through this cold front coming in. And what do you have for us, Gary?
Well, the only thing I have, since this is Councilmember Bagwell's last meeting, I want to say thank you for your service and appreciate the opportunity to work for you and wish you the best. To everyone else, happy holidays.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I say have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Iris DeCarolla?
Yes.